Good evening and welcome to the Town of Douglas Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, January 27, 2022. Time is 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda is a public hearing for Darkstream LLC. They're requesting a continuance to February 10, 2022. 7:15.
Make a motion to move to February 10, 7:15.
Motion made by Jake.
Sure.
Second by Mike G. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Continued. We got another typo on this.
Probably.
Yeah, just to let you know. We could change it. No, before hearing, continue.
Oh geez.
Again. It's in the public notices too for contact.
Oh, that's wonderful. Alright.
Let's start with the additional business. Pine, Sand and Stone, 120 Gilboa Street, Site Plan Modification Update.
Andy Leonard should be on.
Come here.
Hi, Andy.
From Pine, Sand. Hello, everybody.
What are we up to?
Well, so we're renting one of the bays, 10,000 square foot bays over at the mill. And they're lacking parking, so we were hoping to make an area that, in that letter I have, there's a map mistake typo. The area, I think you have a plan from Andrew's survey plan, and we just locked out the rectangle. It's actually 80 feet by 20 feet for a total of 1,600 if I did that math right. Can anybody check that?
Uh, yeah, I was wrong.
So, uh, we're just hoping to crush out the lawn and put in some dent grate gravel so we can park in that area.
Just through the chair question.
Yep.
Andy, do you plan on putting gravel or just like crushed down?
Uh, well, dent grate crushed, crushed down, which has got a little bit of area.
Okay. That's perfect.
So where is this falling under our bylaw for the site plan approval, 9.4.5? Is requesting a waiver.
Right.
Yeah, you can go on that.
Sure. So minor site plan or minor site plan modification are 9.4.6. Lots for a request of an applicant to at least request a minor modification of the site as long as it's not exceeding X amount of parking spaces to gross floor area. I felt like this, given the overall property of this site, I felt it was important to at least bring this to the board, see if the board felt that this met the definition of a minor site plan. I feel like it does considering that this would be something pervious surface. So I, I think there's still a request for determination with the Conservation Commission just because.
It's been approved.
It's already been approved?
Yeah.
So I just didn't see this as needing the full technical drawings from an engineer for this minor modification.
So under the bylaw, there's, are you saying minor site plan approval is not even needed? Because minor site plan approval is, has all those things, 500 square feet or less.
Yeah.
But then there's also, there was an approved site plan approval for this project, and that's why we're calling it a modification?
Yeah, I call this a minor modification.
Because I don't, I don't understand the waiver of technical compliance.
So the board could issue that waiver given the minor nature of the point.
Yeah, I don't even know if it, if it needs a waiver.
Okay.
Because site plan approval is given, and it's not increasing the parking.
Okay. Perhaps the board could take a vote of that nature, just saying that it's not required.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just thinking it through with my.
Just to the chair.
Memory.
So what we did was we did the site plan approval when they did the growth facility up on the second floor.
Yeah.
Just so you know, for the history of the site. And so.
Expansion of parking, no more than however many, no more than 10 spaces.
Yeah.
And that, that can be hooked into the original, the site plan approval that is on the site.
Yeah.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to consider the activity as minor and to allow the activity under the original site plan approval.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make the motion.
Made by Jake.
I'll second that.
Second by Les. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Sit.
You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. I mean, you could have just parked the cars on the lawn. You know, some people do that.
No, I know. They're a little.
You got this whole hump-bub about this. Yeah, it, it's a little tricky, but the activity is really not substantial.
No.
It's insignificant to the, yeah, to the site plan approval that we gave.
Mm-hmm. Perfect.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Andy.
Okay. Next one is Northeast Wireless Services, 442 Northeast Main Street, 08-01 PWS update.
Clip whole.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This is a annual letter that we get from this applicant for their condition of approval, special permit. This report checks out exactly the way we asked it to. It looks similar to last year. They gave us the information we needed. This is just an FYI to the board that they have complied with their condition.
Perfect. Awesome. And then we've sent them the revised contact information?
Yes.
Okay. In Douglas spelling. Okay, number three, zoning bylaw amendment discussions. Do we want to do these discussions right now, or we can pick one that you like?
Madam Chair, I'd recommend we take these after the meeting.
Okay.
About 15.
Okay. Ongoing development, anything quick under that?
Just a few minor things. This would be item number two for the question from Mr. Stevens, the previous meeting. The granite that you saw on the sidewalk is in fact a handicap ramp, not where a catchphrase is supposed to go. That's not finished yet, but will be finished with top course. I'm just spraying myself a lot to develop. No updates on items one, four, five, six. And number seven, we did get our peer review back from the estimates for Oak Solar, a blue wave solar, Oak Street.
Mm-hmm.
That letter is in your packet. We're now anticipating a response from the applicant engineering team. I elected to go with Fair Corporation on this because they did the original review.
Yep.
They were familiar with the project. The other items I added to our agenda because there's been a little activity. Gilboa Court Extension is going to be looking to finish that project soon. They're looking to have a bond release, so, excuse me, a bond establishment as they're done with their roadway before they can start releasing lots of building.
Okay.
The Maple Street property, this is an FYI for the board, something that Jen thought is that when a bond was set for this project, 204, 206 Maple Street, the bond was set, but the bond was never received. So I would request to the board to make a motion to send a letter to this applicant.
Isn't that the one that we released? Because the guy's daughter was, yeah.
Yeah, but it just seems to be rearing back in some capacity.
I thought he submitted a bond.
We're awaiting a $69,000 bond that we did not receive. It's on paper, but we never received the money.
And did we never approve?
Well, I thought it was a, it wasn't a cash bond, was it? When we decided, I thought they went to their insurance company.
We'll look into it more. I'm kind of taking this from Jen. Usually in our bond accounts, we have a list. But if this was just a tri-party agreement or letter credit, we don't have documentation of that?
No, he brought in the original bond that he got from his insurance company.
Okay, so a letter.
In a package, in like an envelope.
Alright, and maybe that's something we can't find yet.
And I think the treasurer knew about it.
Alright.
Because nobody was here.
Okay.
And then they called me.
Yeah. And just through the chair, I think at the time, he was looking to make improvements to the driveway slash road for the release of the, because they wanted to set, they wanted to remove the covenants.
Yeah, yeah.
They wanted to remove the covenants because they weren't going to sell one of the lots off. And so heating at the road improved, so we weren't going to release the covenants. That's, I think, where we left off.
Well, I'm pretty sure we released the house.
Yeah, the.
The daughter's house.
Yeah.
Or was like, okay to go through.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, they definitely appreciate this information.
Yeah, I think there's a, there's a tape on it.
We'll get a, we'll get a better update in the next meeting.
Yeah, it had to have been summertime.
Yeah, it was having problems.
Okay. 10 Slicky Hollow Estatistic Agentic and Active Project, and we talked about in a while. I know the board considered the earth fill permit complete at a previous meeting that a town engineer was present. I watched some video. But they're obviously developing the lots continuing, so I just want to add that to it.
Yeah, yeah.
Trying to find all the active ones.
Right.
Oh, agree.
For is updates from our office. One thing we have that I'd like to get into, I'll be able to take it later.
Okay.
Is the conflict of interest signing signatures and confirmation of receipt of within the package. Got mine from Vice Chair Schlesberg already. If you want to do minutes before.
I think we'll wait till we get a full board.
Okay.
And then just before we open this up, I believe we need super majority for that special permit.
Yes, we need all four members here.
Uh, we need five.
Oh, right. Of the constitution, you would need five, yes.
So, um, we'll talk about that when we open the hearing, just so everybody know.
Right. So. Madam Chair?
Yes?
To the members, if anyone has contact information for our absent members, if you guys wouldn't mind reaching out if they're on their way or not, might help.
Oh, well, Aaron's in Hawaii.
Oh.
He called me.
Okay.
Um.
Oh, I don't have Ernie's.
I mean, he's probably preparing for the snow. Ernie is.
He could spring in.
And let me see if I have Mike's mic or.
Mike is already told us who we're gonna cut. But he's the only one I wasn't correctly listening to.
So, what happened?
No, I'm just saying maybe, maybe someone was, I don't know.
Ernie?
Yeah.
Why these? I don't have his, his contact information.
What were you talking to Secretary?
I don't either.
Secretary.
Um, I can try to get Aaron to zoom in there five hours behind us.
Ooh.
So he's probably on his first excursion.
Six.
Two o'clock.
Hawaii six?
No.
Five.
You want to make a bet?
I don't know. Hawaii's in the middle of the world. I don't know how that time zone works over there. Which, oh, it's three to California. Three plus two, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyways, it's plus two.
I'll see if John heard from the law.
Yeah, it's 2:14.
Mm-hmm. We just got someone joining us. Someone with a puppy face.
I don't think that's Aaron.
Doesn't look like it.
No, doesn't ring a bell. Okay, does everybody want to sign this for Matt?
Sure.
We each have our own.
Yeah.
Do we get copies of this?
Yep, the, uh, to the chair, the full law is there for you, and we just need acknowledgement of receipt signature.
Okay.
Thank you.
Keep the actual, the rest of it.
Um.
So you can read it.
I just did two of them already for my other boards, for my state boards.
So this is an employee at the municipal department?
Planning Board Conservation Commission. Sorry, Planning Board, no name. Alright. The time is now 7:16. So we'll open the public hearing continued from January 13, 2022. Cooperstown Road Realty Trust application for a special permit in a definitive subdivision residential compound, Hawk Hill Farms, 768 and 772 Northwest Main Street. I'm not sure if you would like to present or if you would like to wait till the next meeting.
Um, really to prevent present, we got a clean bill out from Graves, and that was really the last entering item, so we were.
Okay.
Hoping to close this out.
We're not going to be able to.
I gather that.
So.
Unless Aaron walks in the door right now.
Um, so you can speak if you want. You might need to repeat yourself for the other members that are gonna have to vote on it once, unless they do a mullin rule, but I mean, if they watch the content. There was a couple of the outstanding items that we received from Kent, the correspondence. So you, you read that, right? From the fire chief? Yes.
No.
We got this a little late.
Okay, and we have the letter from Ron Anderson. Should I read that into the record?
That's an email.
Yep, an email. While you're reading that, from January 27 today, uh, no, yeah, this morning. Matthew, based on the number of lots proposed in the plan's conditions, if the board decides to approve this project, I'm okay with the proposed arborities and the private right of way located, location according to the revised plan dated 1/19/2022. That's where it is now, right?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
May I generalize the letter from the fire chief just for record?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Ultimately, one of the points that they made was whether 10% grade is feasible, they'd be willing to accept 12% grade if the owner subdivision was to say that any of the homes built would require, excuse me, I'm reading this wrong, would be required to have an approved fire sprinkler system installed, according with the building code.
The new buildings or?
Yeah, NFP A 13.
Yep. So that's an option.
Okay.
We got this a little late.
Okay, um.
Is that for new, the new houses or the existing houses wouldn't have pre-registered really?
Yeah, fire department wasn't very clear about that.
Any home built in the subdivision.
So, would that exist? So.
Did you rework the plan to get to the 10%? Is it, so, I mean, I would not, my opinion, I would not go with the sprinklers.
Well, it, it seems, again, convoluted because we have existing homes that don't need to be sprinkled, at least by this, what I just read quickly. And then the new houses need to be sprinkled, but.
They're being serviced by the same road.
Hmm.
So I don't know if, I think, any ones in the subdivision, I, I'm, that's what I'm interpreting it as. So anybody that needs fire services would need to have sprinklers.
So the two existing houses would need to be retrofitted?
We could get clarification from the chief since we're not, we can't close this tonight. We can get clarification from the chief on that. It, logically, that's what makes sense.
Right, if you're gonna have. It's not clear.
Yeah, but if you have a fire truck coming in, you would, what's the difference if the fire truck can't get up to 12%?
That's why I'm questioning this letter.
Yeah, so we can, we can get clarification. And that's all. We got, uh, do you, do you want any, you want to say anything else?
No, there's, no, we, we.
So we're leaving the roadway at the same location as planned, so you're not doing test pits for that ledge issue. So we got that. And we got the, you reworked the roadway for the 10%. We got the Graves back, the review back. Everything's been taken care of with that. So I think.
There's not enough people to vote for anything tonight.
No, it's a super majority.
Super majority for the special.
So five, yeah.
And then for the, it doesn't, yeah, so we have four on sound.
Right there, yeah.
So you could vote on half if you really had to, but.
Yeah, I mean, my preference would be to wait.
Yeah. I don't know, make them, I just read it too, so, but I'd like to get clarification on that.
Okay, Matt, if you could request that, thank you.
Retrofitting the existing will be.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's two weeks, so I would prefer if the whole board was here, we get that answer, and then.
Is there a way to contact anyone?
We would just.
One person's in Hawaii, one person's.
Out.
Out sick, and the, what?
We didn't know that, that they weren't going to be here, and we still ran around trying to get Graves to make sure that the stuff was done.
Well, we knew one person wasn't going to be here, but we, we can only control ourselves. I mean, we showed, we showed up.
Yeah.
You do.
Yep. Anyone in the audience have any questions?
Well, I just had to open present, but there's no reason to do it, like you said, with everybody here, so.
Okay. Anyone online have anything, comments, questions regarding this hearing? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to continue to February 10.
Jake, any last words?
What? At, um, 7:30. Motion made by Mike G.
Second.
So, Jake, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, alright.
So is that the 10?
The 10.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Did you want to submit anything?
No, that's.
Okay, alright. Okay, have a good night.
You too.
Alright. Um, zoning bylaw amendment discussions, 55-plus developments. See something in our packet for our proposed. Age 55 plus.
Yeah.
Draft number 12. I'm just kidding. So is this someone else's, or this is ours? We're adding it in?
Yeah.
By, under assisted living?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We're below it.
Alright, so what would you like us to do? Can we take this home, review it? Okay.
Just through the chair, Matt, what's your fur, what's your thoughts on it? Have you scanned through it?
I have, I believe she took it, excuse me, through the chair. I believe you see a little, a couple of little notes in here that I started looking to photocopy. But part of my main question here is the zones, where would you be considering this? But as far as how this bylaw came to be, I understand this came through economic development, all the Eric, and so it puts together a couple of drafts. The board here may be more familiar with the history of how this was derived than I. So this seemed like something that the board or even town administration had been working on for some time. So what's more important to me prior to my review of this is to get the feedback of this board if we're gonna consider this for Tom.
For Tom Spring?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the one right off the bat is this municipal water sewer requirement, and then you put comma if readily available. Not you, I'm not meaning you, but.
Yeah.
If readily available, I do not think that that is appropriate.
No, no.
I mean, we, it's not our fault, it's no one's fault that we don't have the infrastructure set up to have, I mean, this is age-related.
Yeah.
Type of thing. That first thing off the bat. And then as far as the zone, to make it, I think we talked to Eve about this, to make it a little bit easier, if the land meets the requirements that are set forth, like, say, two acres, 50 feet of frontage, whatever it is, then that qualifies. Then that's a use. So far, the use table should be allowed in all, all zones, as long as you meet the requirements of the, the square footage and the, the frontage.
So, so it's a buildable lot, and then it would then be allowed to be a, an assisted living facility lot, which is, are we talking duplexes?
So there's a minimum acreage.
Yeah. Minimum acreage.
10 buildable lots is required.
Correct. That's, that doesn't cover acreage, though.
With a road?
It doesn't cover acreage, though.
Well, yeah, because the acreage is based on the zone, the underlying zone. So Eve wanted to do like an overlay, no, not an overlay, just use the table to designate where, where it's allowed. It would obviously be a special permit from the planning board.
So you, you have to have 10 lots?
And not site plan approval. Well, then that kind of clashes too, because I mentioned this qualifies under site plan approval.
Yeah, that was considerable.
Yeah.
But I might.
Yeah.
One piece that I kind of, that this is clashing with a little bit is what's on the horizon for industrial developments, water sewer lines coming in. I understand that if this was a water sewer requirement, which I also don't like, I would caution the board from allowing this in an industrial zone, because of the development coming forward.
Oh, yeah, great.
A lot more town that this could be served in. It's a residential style place, residential zone would make a lot of sense. Our gateway districts, I guess our commercial districts entering in from the major routes are supposed to be for commercial refill, sort of use. So it's kind of a first glance recommendation here.
Well, yeah, I think the category is residential.
Yeah.
So I think we should stick with that. I just don't think that there, I mean, it's almost impossible to find 10 buildable lots with water and sewer.
Yeah.
So how does that even make any sense?
Are we?
Did we copy some other towns' bylaw that we thought was like us?
I believe that is what we thought.
And I think it's got a piece of the flex that's in the backend, because it covers about open space and stuff like that, but, or continuous open space of ownership. I, I'd rather see, the way I envision this is if it's a two-acre zone area, right, and let's say you can do whatever, three lots, and instead of having five, six people live there as a, you know, single family raising kids and things like that, that it then is allowed to be a kind of a 55 and older duplex, you know, and you still have to keep that bedroom count. And then maybe your lot is an acre instead of two acres, and the remaining acre becomes open space in the back.
Hi.
Something like that. I mean, just something where it's, you know, but I don't think you can do 10 lots anywhere. I think you gotta bring that number down to something reasonable, but you also gotta look at taking a lot that you don't need four bedrooms and, you know, a five-bedroom people living there. It's mom and pop, 55 and older, so it's two-bedroom, you know what I mean, home.
But it's pretty much cluster development.
Yeah.
And it's age-restricted cluster development.
Correct, 100%.
So why don't we just copy our cluster development bylaw and say, do a little, a couple little, you know, nice, like the special things for 55 plus? I mean, the cluster one, I'm sure doesn't have you, you're required to have water and sewer.
No.
And I don't know what the words "if readily available" means, because that's like a lawsuit in itself.
Yeah.
It's way too limiting. But I, I would like the chance to just go through it.
Sure.
And make some notes, because, yeah, I had a vision in my head also. And, um, make some notes, because, yeah, I had a vision in my head also. Like a nice courtyard and a little clubhouse and a, you know.
Like, I think Upton put one in on the Northbridge line that their.
Well, you've got Summerfield and, and Oxbridge.
Yeah, exactly.
And that seems to be successful, because multiple people have built like that.
Would we have an issue in our town with like the agricultural area where you need to like duplexes and multi-families?
I think it should still be all right.
Yeah, you could put it in RA.
I don't think, but you're not doing, but not, no duplexes.
But can you townhouses in RA?
I don't think so.
If you grant this in this area and you say you're going to allow the dup, this is all about duplexes.
Well, it would be.
It's at a small home, I, I don't think a bunch of tiny homes. I think if you take a two-bedroom townhome, you know, I mean, two townhomes that are both two bedrooms each, is a lot better than a tiny home on a two-acre lot.
I'm just picturing the, uh, I feel the name in the middle of it, off of South Street, past, uh, our street. Yeah, it's only that where.
Well, that's where, that's where this was sparked.
Yeah.
They wanted to do the 55 plus.
Correct.
There.
Can they do townhouses in that area though, or?
Well, they have, they have four total units that their special permit says that they can have.
What is this?
So technically speaking, if somebody came to us and wanted to do. I think you can put something in here for the, the style of the type. And then I would think of it as you limit the amount of infrastructure, amount of roadway, and then you do paths and you do green and like. So that we're not, they're not having to care too much, because this is going to be a HOA.
Correct.
Right?
100% has to be, should be.
They're, they have to stick to the rules of the age restriction. So.
Town definitely needs them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the.
I don't know what Millbury has for their 55 and older. But one, one thing that Millbury does is they got a chart for their building is if there's water sewer available, if need, nice.
They consist of any combination of single-family and duplex residential structures.
So, I don't know, what's, what's your vision, I guess, Matt, for these? Through the chair.
I believe this is just said Evergreen Estates was originally approved, 31 lots, single family with a couple duplexes sprinkled in. I believe the gentleman who owns it wishes to modify that. Change the lots and just do duplexes in a 55-plus community. I think that's what sparked the interest.
Yes.
As you mentioned.
Yes.
So in my opinion, I'm not quite sure on this yet, but the way I see it is I don't see what's keeping him from doing that now without this, so.
A filing for a special permit and turning every single one into duplexes, and then you need your cisterns, which I don't know if that was part of the original.
There's a lot of design components that need to be added.
And, and there is a risk coming back to modify the existing decision to ask for further, um, units. Because you get the units through the, the base number, it's a flexible development. There was a calculated maximum amount of units. So you're going to make those up by money. You also increase your affordable requirement for the number of affordable income units that they, they have to have. And that just, sometimes it's too much, it's a non-starter to have too many affordable.
Yeah, ultimately, it was 23 lots, excuse me, 23 units with eight as a bonus based on the calculations. They have 31 total. And what the concept modification would be is to reduce it to 17 lots altogether, but both gave you duplexes, 34. There's a 35 total based on the calculation that he could, or at least apply for. So I guess the theory is, instead of it being those 31 individual lots, a couple duplex, I think it was 27 lots. It'd be shrinking it down to 17 as a more appealable filing.
Keeping, keeping the same amount of units as previously.
It's slightly more, it'd be 35 with the bonus, but he'd be doing 34.
So he's doubling, so he's taking out a four-bedroom home?
He's adding three units.
And they're making those up.
Conceptually.
Yeah, conceptually, they're, they'll make them up by the cash, cash payment, the, another affordable. You get another, you get a bonus.
Possibly.
Yeah.
So not sure where that exactly goes, but I, that's what prompted this, I believe, to confirm.
Yeah.
So that's why it's here. Not just to guide that development, but it's also an introduction to this type of idea in town, which the town desperately needs. So it's worth a review, I think. Whether this makes spring town meeting or not, it's still something we should be working on.
Yeah, and I think that was also what we thought, we need to make sure we are getting everyone to have the availability for this type of construction versus just the Evergreens Estate subdivision.
Of course.
So that's why Eve had suggested not changing the maps, just using your words and allowing it, if you meet the criteria, it's allowed. So I, I would have to agree, because where are you going to stop the overlay? If you did an overlay versus the, the chart versus the use chart, use table. So you need a definition, you got the table edit. But, I mean, on the surface, I love the idea, I think it's great.
Townhomes.
Well, they said that it can be a mix. So if we, so that brings another question. So even if we, they wait, say we get it passed a town meeting and it goes through, and then they come in and they want this type of construction, that could probably be a lot easier, because now they don't have to forfeit those affordable housing units. So if this passed, then they could do the same exact thing, right?
Yeah. It's, it's an option, we're gonna either require them or contribute to a trust.
Because there's quite amount of acreage up there.
Yeah, and there was, there was, yeah, and they already calculated.
They have, if you went with this 10 buildable lots, they have 10 buildable lots. Okay. Yeah, I think it needs to be reviewed though, because I already saw a couple things I'm not kind of, and everyone's not here. Okay, height description.
Through the chair, height, height description is something that our building commissioner spotted. Our height needs a, needs a more, better description.
The definition?
What he would like that to be is the average of four points to measure height. And he just wants to put that line in the bylaw so that there's no debate, because.
The mean.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah. Otherwise.
So I have a very good definition that I reference all the time when people try to fight me on what heights things are. So, yeah, so we need a substitute for, we, do we even have a height definition right now? I didn't think so. Yeah, so we need to add a new definition under our definitions table, in our definitions section.
I can have that ready for the next meeting.
Okay, great. And then some towns actually, look, out towards Boston, they give you pictures on how everything's measured with gable, with hip roofs, with flat roofs. So that might be something we want to look into for diagrams on height, just to make things even easier. Because mean height, you can, let's just say you're over the height, you can bring in material to raise the height up. I mean, to lower the height. You can backfill the material if you're over a foot or something. There's always a way to fix that, but if you're actually, you know, doing the measurements correctly. Site plan review, hearing, notice, and advertising requirements.
Those are absent from our site plan review chapter in our bylaws. There's nothing in there that says anyone who files a site plan review has to advertise or notify about it.
Because it was just simply a permit or a review.
Right. When we ask yourself, should the neighbors find out about that if someone?
Yes.
So it's just technically absent from there, I'd just like to add it.
Okay.
Simple as that. There's a lot of other things I found in our site plan review, but this was, was time sensitive.
Yeah, so let's add that, but you're going on to the meeting. But we could possibly put a policy together right now. We could vote on a policy to add that into the packet of requirements for filing of site plan review. I'll entertain a motion.
Just through the chair, a question, so what, what would be your notification radius?
300 feet.
Why 300?
That's typical for special permit.
ZBA.
That's ZBA, that's not typical for conservation or anybody else. It's like 100 feet, 200 feet.
I would go with 300 feet also, because these are, we're talking about site plan approval that are, these are commercial, most likely commercial, large buildings. Industry.
Neighborhood.
Yes, and then we have mixtures of residential rate adjacent to industrial all over the place with no real buffers. So I would do 300, um, and you know what the requirements are.
Essentially, we'd be taking what's under special permit and moving.
Yeah.
To cover both.
Yeah. So let's just say if they only needed to do a filing for special permit, I mean, for a site plan approval, then that would cover all. So I would just have that as a policy for the board until you can get it into the, um, just like we have, you know, other policies.
If you don't mind, I actually recommend holding on that, just so I can put a draft in front of you and.
Okay. All right, that's fine, we'll authorize you to make the draft.
Very well.
And residential compounds.
Okay. You have a residential compound that requires a special permit and definitive subdivision review. The special permit is only for the reduction of frontage, the allowed frontage to 50 feet. I feel like that should be part of the subdivision review, whether it's a waiver pool by the board or not. It doesn't make sense to be located in the zoning bylaw for post staff to make two filings. Log for that super majority.
Correct.
Which is, it's out of place to me.
Correct, so it should be an automatic 50. And then, and then we, the board can grant the waiver for less.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be automatic conforming with the regulations, but the board could grant it for less.
Yes, correct, yep.
And I think the, the other thing was, was.
So we're removing the special permit requirement for that?
I believe it was.
Okay.
And which, which would remove the, because I think we talked about that. It was, I'll send you my notes on what, we reviewed it, the residential compound. There was another area that had, had some issues as well. The one, one was the super majority vote on the.
Well, because it was a special permit, that's why, that's why it's triggering that, but, um, so residential compound is under definitive subdivision rules?
It's, yes.
Okay, okay.
For some reason.
It's in the rules and regs?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, they put like the sentence in the zoning? Oh, they put it in the chart too?
Yeah.
Oh.
Check it out.
They generally just list the zones in which they're allowed.
Yep.
So I guess the purpose could be conceived that it's limited to the residential zone.
Just write it in the thing.
But the special permit requirement for the frontage reduction doesn't make sense to me. That should be.
How, how do you know that that was why it was special permit and not the zone, not the zones in the chart for use?
It's just how it reads.
It's calling special permit?
It's how, yeah, that's how it reads, I'll read it.
But maybe it's to limit the zones that it goes in, because it says no, right, in.
Correct.
Industrial and.
It could use a language overhaul, it's just one sentence.
Okay.
A special permit planning board may reduce the frontage requirement for any lot shown on an endorsed definitive plan for residential compound. As the finding, finding board rules governing the lands do not less than 50 feet. Get the definitive approved, you can then reduce it by special permit.
Right, that's what that's saying.
That's all it says, which is weird if, of it being a use in different zones, this should have some more meat on its bones, because that's all it says. If we want to govern the use, this should read more.
Yeah, I think that the use, the, where it's allowed is what the point is, should be the point. But I understand, I, I don't understand why you get a, an endorsed definitive plan and then you need to request a special permit to reduce it, even though it's already, you're already applying for the residential compound. Okay.
One thing the board could consider, and this use table on this would be new for the town of Douglas. The use table only talks about, you know, special permits, what's allowed and what isn't. You can, in the use table, it says put definitive subdivision in these boxes instead of planning board special permit. And that'll, that'll help you regulate what zones are, it's allowed.
Yeah, or just put Y, just put allowed, or is it A?
Allowed by.
PB?
Yes.
Or it's a Y.
Yes, or Y.
Yeah, it's, it's what PB, right?
I would just, if, if you don't want to do, add another thing, just put yes on all the zones that say special permit right now.
I'll check on that.
And then I would just keep like the, the nose, still the nose.
Okay. I'll put something together for next meeting.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Um, Matt, are you going to look at the, um, townhomes allowed in the VR zone?
I absolutely will.
It was by right?
Yeah, that's.
Yes. I just wanted to prepare these for this.
Why do you keep saying townhomes?
Duplexes, townhomes are different than, townhomes and duplexes are very similar, but, because of multifamilies would be.
It's like row houses versus duplex is two. And townhouses are multiple, could be two plus.
So maybe we gotta put definition in there.
Yeah, I mean, more definitions, the better.
Yeah.
I like definitions.
Yeah. Do we have multifamily definition there, or duplex definition there?
Through the chair, we have multifamily, excuse me, we don't have, and this is my note from our previous conversation, we need multifamily townhouse condos or cottages added to this residential use tab. And we don't have any of those. How to define them as well.
Right, yeah.
I just didn't feel those would be ready for this town meeting.
Come on.
Administrative policy and procedure?
Yes. And I was prepared to go over a bunch of things with everyone, but we're missing three members.
Yeah.
So one thing I want to point out is we have a new R2D2 looking microphone in the middle of the room.
Yep, nice.
That picks up much more, much better than, than it has in the past, we have to lean into these microphones. So we have to be very conscientious for side conversations, et cetera, with keeping everything through the chair. And, um, one line of communication at all times, especially when applicants are in, we want to interact with them directly, everything else.
You should probably put a pin in that.
Yeah, we, we do.
Because, um, so that all the members can hear you.
Correct.
Say that.
So all of them. So that's part of our, kind of decorum. I, I gotta say upfront, just that I do, I do respect what the board's doing. The board actually communicates very well, we understand and respect each other's opinions. And looking back at past decisions for approvals and denials, the board does its homework and makes sure that they're citing the right sections for denials and such. So Amber, please, before I've seen, I just had some general decorum stuff that I just don't want to come off poorly when I say this, so. We should only be addressing each other by our last names, no first name stuff. It's Mr. Steven, Mr. Cracko, Sharky.
I just feel for anyone that has the same.
Madam Chair, and you be Mr. Vice General.
Oh, geez, I'm going to write this down.
Recusing, when we have members that recuse, typically we call recuse and we stay at the table. Depending on the conflict, whether it's the financial or family or just in a butter, one way or the other, we have to leave the table. Okay, if you participate as in a butter, if you're just a neighbor of the project, you can participate as in a butter, the audience. But if we are recused, we have to get them. Now, that's not a, you have to, it's a town council strongly advised. All right, so, um, that's really important. Those are the real big ones I wanted to point out, at least until the other members get here. So this has been, uh, talked about and I wanted to bring those to the table now. Didn't want to do it at the last meeting, because my informationary period wasn't up yet, so now I'm introducing it. Didn't wanna do it at the last meeting, because my probationary period wasn't up yet, so now I'm introducing it.
You're what?
My probationary period.
Throw the hammer down now.
Yeah, it's coming now, so three months of observation.
Just can't wait.
Just through the chair.
I have to bring these things over.
Madam Chair to you.
Madam Chair. It's known that he's off of probation.
Right.
Because now.
Good. I know there's a couple times I felt he threw me on the bus, so it's go time now.
Yeah, I, I am very direct. It's gonna happen. I apologize in advance, but.
You can't apologize in advance for all the things that you're gonna do in the future.
I, I am gonna do that anyway. Yeah, I tend to be direct.
Right.
If it comes off poorly.
And, and for us, we have been volunteering on this board for a long, 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 long time and sacrificing and not getting paid to be here, so.
Sometimes weekly.
Yes, that was quite torturous.
Yeah.
And through COVID. So we may need a little soft pushing in the direction that the town is saying that we need to go.
Yeah, I don't expect these things to happen overnight. As long as we're helping each other along, and you hear somebody use a first name, stop them. We are getting our nameplates by the next meeting, you will be getting a gavel. And I fully participate, you should use it.
I am going to use it.
So.
Can't wait. Can't wait. Awesome.
I'm surprised there isn't one.
You might have to sit a little closer.
I'm bringing, I wear all black. I'm broke. Do we wanna go through the annual report?
Madam Chair, the annual report was prepared in tandem. Jen Kutcher did a really good job with this, just kind of verifying some of the projects. I just need the board's blessing on this so we can submit it. Fortunately, the deadline is Monday, so.
Like last Monday?
If you need to take time to read it, by all means.
No, I think it's great. I think it's great.
It'd be good to collect a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve that two thousand twenty-one annual report has written.
Mr. Stevens made the motion. Seconded by Mr. Greco, all those in favor?
Aye.
Is that it? Yeah, we'll wait for those. I mean, that's November eighteenth, that's, we're pretty up to date.
Except the.
Any vouchers? December ninth, you mean?
Yeah, maybe it is December ninth, yes.
I have the corrected version in my folder for the November eighteenth. We had already went through that and corrected a bunch of stuff. So I can, did we not vote on?
No.
December ninth, we said we were going to. Okay, eleven eights. Eleven eighteen. Okay, I guess we didn't, it was up. Were we waiting for someone to get?
We were waiting for the final edits.
Oh, and the publicis hearing under number four, the November eighteenth.
Yeah.
Publicis.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If the board was inclined to make motions to approve as amended, we could then make the corrections and stamp them in.
Okay, I'm just double checking, I mean, this is all marked up, so I'll entertain a motion. The November eighteenth.
Just for November eighteenth, I think we mentioned with Jen, she'd have like her title, so she is like an employee.
Yeah, Principal Clerk.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is the corrected version.
I see, okay.
And there's just a couple of like David versus Davis.
Yeah. So I'm never going through all that.
Yeah.
That looks good, that's corrected.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. Do you have a question on the November eighteenth?
No, I was, I wasn't sure what he said, I thought he made a motion.
Oh.
Oh, no, I had a question.
I'll make a motion to approve the November eighteenth minutes as revised.
Motion's made by Mr. Stevens.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Greco, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we'll save the December ninth?
Yeah.
Mr. Benoit, do you wanna take this?
Sure.
I can remember every single person last name.
Two of them, one person.
All right, ready to roll? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Wait, wait, wait. What about December ninth?
We're gonna wait till the next time. We're gonna wait for everybody to get here for next time. Motion's made by Mr. Vice Chair, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Schultzberg, is that how you say it?
Yeah.
Is that good enough? Schultzberg, that's a nice name.
It's easier than others.
Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.